I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 9th, 2018, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. Dr. Hillman, there are just a couple of items in the table file.
Yes, we had several personnel items, including appointments, leaves of absence, and resignation, and we also had an additional grant application.
Okay, excellent. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 12th, and the special school board meeting held on March 27th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve both of these minutes? By Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 12th, and the special school board meeting held on March 27th, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have three this evening. First of all, we'd like to congratulate Val Murdestorff and our Finance Department. Northfield Public Schools is a 2018 School Finance Award recipient for the 2017 Financial Reporting. The School Finance Award is awarded annually by the Minnesota Department of Education's Division of School Finance to recognize schools for meeting statutory deadlines for submission of audited fiscal and financial information. The criteria for 2017 Financial Reporting included timely submission of data and compliance with Minnesota statutes, the presence of select indicators of fiscal health, and accuracy in financial reporting. And so, I believe this is year number seven in a row that the school district has won this award. It is a testament to Director of Finance Val Murdestorff and the entire Finance Department. We really appreciate their diligent work every day to make sure that we are in line to receive this award. So, shout out to Val and her team. Thanks so much. We appreciate that. (applause) Northfield Public Schools had three students that won the Mayor For a Day Essay Contest. This is a new award sponsored by the Mayor's Office of the City of Northfield, and there were other students from within the community that won it, but three Northfield School District students were selected as well. Madison Sevek, who's a fifth grader at Bridgewater, Lola McCarty is a fifth grader at Sibley, and Ben Florrie is a fourth grader at Sibley. And so, we congratulate those students. They received their awards at the annual State of the City Address, which was given by Mayor Pownell on Monday, March 19th. So, we look forward to their leadership for a day as the mayor. So, congratulations to those three elementary school students. Again, at the Mayor's State of the City Address, there was a very special award given out, the 2018 Ethics Award, and that was awarded to recognize a junior or senior high school student who exhibits high ethical standards, and it was presented to, this is not going to shock anyone who knows her, high school senior Siri Hoff. And Principal Joel Lear had nominated her. I'm going to read to you what Joel had written in his nomination of Siri. "Siri has been a consistent champion of what is good and right in the world. Siri has been a vocal leader in community activism, including the annual Martin Luther King Celebration, last year's A Day Without Immigrants Rally, and the Women's March on Washington. Siri is a tireless advocate for historically marginalized populations in our school, community, and country. Ethics and equity are the pulse that beats in Siri's heart." Joel Lear can write, and every one of those words is true about Siri. She has very clearly said she is going to run for president someday, and I believe that she will and look forward to that. So, congratulations to Siri on winning this very prestigious award. It's new, but you're being selected from Northfield. Juniors and seniors, we have a lot of great kids, and for her to be selected, it's really an honor for her and for the school district as well. So, congratulations to Siri. Those are the announcements and recognitions for April 9th, 2018.
Board members, are there anything anyone would like to add? Okay. We will move on to our first report. We have with us tonight, Northfield High School's School Psychologist, Carrie Duba, and she's going to present an update on the Students Supporting Students Program, also known as Peer Helper. Welcome, Carrie.
Thank you. Am I using the...
Use the arrow keys, Carrie.
Arrow keys? All right. Thanks. Yep, thank you. I am Carrie Duba, and one of the things that I do as the School Psychologist with the high school is I get to work with a tremendous group of students who are trained to support their peers at the high school in a variety of ways. The last time I was here, we talked about the plans for moving ahead with us. At that time, we called it a peer helping program. We have been fully committed to it being a very student-directed program, and the first thing they did was say, can we not call it a peer helping program? We do not want to be called peer helpers. They said, we think that that doesn't resonate with us, so they chose Students Supporting Students. So, I'm here to report on the Students Supporting Students Program, and this picture of these glowing students actually includes some of our academic student coaches as well. We put them together as a whole group for a training, and this is the picture from that, and you'll notice our friend Elias Waller is among that group right there. So, we are thrilled to have them with us. The first task when we became a group is to write a mission statement, and I left their handwritten mission statement up there because they struggled on this, and they worked hard, and it mattered to them to get it just right. So, the mission statement of our Students Supporting Students Program is, "We, as Students Supporting Students, are a group of students dedicated to improving the dynamic of our community by supporting our peers through honest and confidential conversation." I think it captures the work beautifully, and they're thoughtful wrestling with that word "culture" and settling on dynamic, and they had a real understanding of what it means to have a dynamic in the community, and so they chose that. So, that's the mission statement of our group that was written by our students. So, I will be showing you pictures of our Students Supporting Students team members, but clearly I can't show you pictures of them in action. So, all of these are photos that are taken from the trainings that we've had since we've first gathered. This one was from our initial training. Our students were identified at our fall class meetings when we polled each of the classes and asked them to list students that they felt were the natural helpers in their peer group. So, they identified those students, and we put together a list, and we invited them. And they came one by one to my office with a pass, and they were nervous because they didn't know why they were going to see the school psychologist, and every single one of them said, yes, 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 we're ready. They were honored. It was really great. So, in the end, we had 27 students that we trained. All along, we wanted to keep the adult hand very light in this process. We really want this to come because that's what we know the credibility comes from, that these are selected by their peers. And so, when we looked at it, we did just adjust slightly based on the recommendation from the training program to balance for grade. So, we do have it pretty well balanced, as you can see there. The gender balance happened naturally. We didn't do anything with that. That was pretty, we were pretty fortunate about that, and we were thrilled to have five fluent Spanish speakers as part of our program, too. We have, this is actually a really critical part of it, and we have five adult advisors, and we try to kind of cover a lot of areas with our adult advisors. You can see Ray there working hard. Ray Cudre is one of our adult advisors, and he represents the teachers because it's really important to have a teacher part of that so that the teachers understand. We do at times have students that are in and out of class. It doesn't happen a lot, but it's good to have a teacher there to help us understand the impact there. Kathy Wirtzma Miller is our school counselor. Carrie Prestman is our school social worker. Malia Fallon, who is our youth engagement coordinator, and our HCI connection. We are thrilled to have her on board as one of our adult advisors. Greg Gianopolis, who has been a AmeriCorps Promise follow with us for a couple of years, and then I am one of the advisors. Initially, we had a two-day training, two full days. We have trainers that come from Hazelton, Betty Ford, and they come down. Mike Call and Dana, whose name I can't remember. Dana is an assistant principal in Hudson. Mike is a social studies teacher in Stillwater, and they have been training peer helping groups through Hazelton, Betty Ford for 26 years. And they came down, and they're fantastic. That's their milieu. They work with high school students. They know their stuff. We finished up two days. The students left. We had no more than said goodbye to the students, and they walked out the door, and the adults were sitting there, and those two trainers looked at us and said, "In 26 years, we have never had a group like that." We are thrilled to see where this group goes. And I have to say, as the adult, as one of the adults there, we were so proud of our students who comported themselves so well and took it so seriously and are all-in, are enthusiastic, and the depth, and I think what struck the trainers was the depth of the discussion and the question and the understanding and the wrestling with what their role would be as a student who would support others. So, at the training, the training is really, really quite well thought out. So, the training topics include what peer helping is and what it isn't. One of the things that, for example, we're very careful about is that when we were talking about what some groups and some communities name their group, we stay away from, we explicitly stay away from the title, "Peer Counselor." We are not training kids to be peer counselors. Counseling is a very specific activity. You are trained, you are licensed. You are not a mini counselor. So, that, for example, is what peer helping isn't. And what is it? Well, it's being a great listener. It's not fixing problems. It's listening. It's being there. It's understanding what you need to keep confidential and what you can't keep confidential. And if it's something that you can't keep in confidence, what is your next step? Who and how and what are your referral, what's the referral process? What is your, what is the school support system, and how do you connect into that? And then, we talk a lot about process and logistics. How and with whom and when do you meet with students? And, you know, just like Howard, and really, that's something we got to decide for ourselves. Every, probably every peer helping, little P, little H, every peer helping program in every district looks different based on how their school district runs and what their school needs are and what their staff capacity is, and, you know. And so, we really got to define it, and the students took a big lead in that. Almost 25%, probably more to 30% of the training was on self-care. What we know is that the students that were selected, in fact, we looked to leverage this, the students that were selected are the natural helpers, right? They are naturally inclined to be helpers, and we know that that comes at some cost to them, that it can be depleting. And so, a lot of the training is on self-care. How do you take care of yourself? How do you keep yourself grounded and safe? And how do you know what your own boundaries are? How do you set your own boundaries? And how do you get your needs met? Where do you feel like you're getting support for the work that you're doing? And again, it's the work they were already doing. We just gave them some extra tools and plugged them into the larger system so that there was a different kind of support for them with a little bit of accountability. So, how we have set up at Northfield High School, how Students Supporting Student Program works is that we have a space where we have students who may have a study hall, similar to what we do with our academic student coaches who come to our study center and they spend their study hall with us. Not all of our Students Supporting Student team members have study halls, so if they do, they spend their study hall, and we have a couple of different spaces where they can spend their study hall for kids who they either have pre-arranged to come in or kids who drop in. There's always an adult there. S120, there are always four adults there. Another room that they use, there's always one adult there. The pairing can be done intentionally, and I'll show you a couple ways that that's done. The idea is that in my interaction with students as a school psychologist, I can intentionally pair them with a Students Supporting Student team member. I can say like, oh, hey, you know, could you check in with this person? We haven't done a lot of that. We're a very new program. But intentional planning could also mean that they are setting up, and this is by and large what happens, they're setting up with their peers, a specific time where they're going to talk to them. Or it could be that it's a conversation that happens informally. I will show you how we schedule. We do have a scheduling option through a program called Calendly. One of the things that we ask our Students Supporting Students to do is report. Obviously, it's anonymous, but we just need them to log. We've met with somebody. We talked about this, and we're going to follow up. We don't need an adult to check in, for example. And then, every month, we have a monthly meeting and a training. The trainings are strategies for how you help another while, you know, keeping yourself grounded, right? How do you help as a high school freshman, sophomore, junior, senior? How do you help a peer? And then, what are the skills that you use to keep yourself day-to-day feeling full so that you can be of service to others? I don't know if I have a slide coming up later, but Drew Weiss, Dr. Weiss from Carlton Mental Health, Student Mental Health Services Wellness, I'm not sure what his department is called, came and he spoke to us. He was outstanding, and the students really, really connected with him because he talked a lot about what it means to be a student under stress and what it means to partner with other students who are under stress. So, that's an example of some of the training that we've had. Now, when I talk about scheduling, this is one of the options that we have for scheduling. This is the Calendly program that we use, and we have a link that's been pushed out to all the students at the high school on their homepage. We also have QR codes posted throughout the school that you can scan, and it brings you to the scheduler. And you can see they have a lot of options to choose from, and so then, if they were wanting to speak to a student, one of our Students Supporting Student team members, they would select that. And you can see that they have to list their name and their grade, and then, the students are listed by name so that it's a very intentional pairing. We indicate on there who is a Spanish, fluent Spanish speaker so that that can be part of consideration. And then, it shows up on my calendar. So, my calendar will alert me that another, a student in the building has arranged to meet with one of the Students Supporting Students. It also shows up on Greg Gianopolis's calendar. He's the one that floats between the spaces where the students meet. So, we're always aware when somebody has scheduled to meet with one of our students or one of our students have met. So, our students are natural helpers, and the way that we expect to kind of most reap the benefit of their training is that they go out, they're trained, and we give them some other skills for their toolbox, their other tools for their toolbox, and then, they go out and they continue to interact with their peer group in a natural way that they have always interacted, but the quality of the interaction is different, and their awareness of what to do next is different. So, we reap the benefits by them continuing to engage in their natural behaviors. We, again, we may arrange for a check-in. We may be intentional. I have done that maybe twice, but that's always in the space, again, like our academic student coaches that have, you know, four adults there. So, that's another one of our training when they're learning how to coach. That's a different day. This is the reporting form, just a little screenshot of a portion of the reporting form that they fill out. And you can see that they list when they've met, whether it was a kind of informal and spontaneous, face-to-face. We really acknowledge that these kids are using their skills via text, Snapchat, on the phone, and we really wanted to capture that because we want that to be skilled, too. That is a primary way that kids interact with one another. It is not sitting in the rec room in your parent's basement anymore, right? It is really doing it that way. So, we capture that. Then, they list the topic, and the reason that we have them list the topic is that drives our future training. If there's something that continues to come up, we want to equip them for responding to that. And we also want to know what are the concerns that are being raised in our student population? We also expect, and this is actually something that we were warned, is that we get a slight increase in referrals to the school psychologist, the school counselor, the school social worker because there's this awareness that there's a process. And so, we want to be sure that kids are being brought to awareness where maybe they wouldn't otherwise have been. I've had several students, Students Supporting Students team members walk students into my office, and, you know, we continue there and we process there, and I know that has happened to our other adult advisors, too. The Students Supporting Students Program, this is a gratuitous visiting dog photo right here. The Students Supporting Students Program is one of, it's a key program along with our academic student coaches of how we are building capacity to support our students' mental wellness at Northfield High School. We know that at secondary, particularly at high school, one of the best approaches is to kind of think in terms of a public health model where we provide enough programming that we promote a student's mental wellness. And so, we ask the question, are the students languishing or are they flourishing? And are we able to provide the supports that allow that to happen? So, we have our Students Supporting Students. We have visiting dogs. This is actually, I snuck this photo in because that's Rachel. She's one of our Students Supporting Student team members. We have visiting dogs every Friday and during finals. We have academic student coaches because we know students who are well-supported academically have a reduction in stress and their experience of stress. We are working hard to build our Raider Nation because that goes, that speaks to the dynamic that our Students Supporting Student team members identify, what is the, what is the sense of community in the high school? We have 10 teachers that we are thrilled to be participating in a six-week course in mindfulness, and it's an awesome course, but that's just another set of adults that have a different lens and a different skill set for working with students. And then, of course, we have our ongoing link program. I wanted to put this quote in here. I got this email from one of our Students Supporting Students team members, and you can read it. It's a long one, but she sent me this email, and I just highlighted the bottom where, I mean, she had a great, she just had a great session, and then, at the bottom, she said, "I also wanted to thank you and the rest of the adults involved for your time and energy put into building this group. I can't wait to see where it goes from here," and that's kind of how we all feel about After I sent this in, I thought, wow, those pictures are sort of alarming, but this is a, this is a training, right? Elias, are you in one of those pictures?
Yeah.
Yeah. What were you modeling there?
Uh...
Do you remember?
Like anxiety.
Anxiety? Yeah. So, the kids had to create a sculpture with their small group of a certain feeling, and I know the first one is frustration, and maybe Elias's is anxiety, and then, the last one is, I don't know, fear. And they did such a great job, I wanted to have that photo in there, but it looks kind of dark, actually, when I look at those photos. But our next steps are continue to build awareness and publicity. We just, incidentally, it just so happened that tonight was one of our monthly meetings of our Students Supporting Students team members, and we are talking about our publicity and how do we raise awareness, and we're continually doing that, and I think we have some good ideas, especially as we're looking to move into next year. And so, then, we have some plans to solidify our process and our logistics, which I think goes hand-in-hand with the awareness and the publicity. We will identify new candidates to replace our stellar, stellar seniors who will be graduating. The Northfield Union of Youth has a youth mental health board, and we are continually in conversation with them because there are ways that we need to come together because it creates a fantastic continuum of support for students who may not access supports through the school all the time. And then, of course, we monitor our data. Our original data that we considered when we looked to putting the program together was the developmental assets profile, the Minnesota Student Survey. We've done what's called the Student Engagement Inventory, which is from the U of M, and it's part of the Check and Connect Program that's used in particular by our AmeriCorps group, feedback from our Students Supporting Students, and of course, the data from our reporting forms, too. So, those are our next steps. And now, any questions?
Excellent presentation. So, board members, questions, comments? Amy?
First, I'm very excited that you're doing this. It seems like a wonderful additional support for our students, so thank you for all your good work to make this happen. And I know it's first years, but my questions sort of have to do with where are you going with this? So, one of my questions is, if someone is approached by a student that they don't feel comfortable counseling, can they get out of it somehow, and how does that work?
So, for example, a student scheduled to meet with one of the students, and they don't, and they don't want to meet with that student, right? Like, for example, if you were a scheduling program, something like that.
Right.
Something, and the only reason I'm asking that way is it would be something that an adult wouldn't have already been involved with, right?
Right.
Yes, yes, they can get out of it. In fact, we were just talking about that sort of, not that situation, but this was part of our logistics conversation tonight, and one of the things they all remarked on is that they felt very confident that their, their role of service to the school did not come with any expectation that they needed to put themselves in an uncomfortable situation, and that they were very, felt very supported by the adults that are attached to the program and also the adults that we can identify for them. So, I think, no, they don't have to, and I think they're aware of that, is the rest of it, is that they can come to us and say, I have this coming. They have come to me to say, I have a meeting coming up, and I would just, I know what it's going to be about, so could you just give me a couple of tools or ideas or some ways that I can approach this? So, I expect it would be very similar if they didn't want to at all. They would come to me and say, this is, this is not going to work. How can I, you know? And all the initial meetings, if it's at school, they meet up in our room, right? And so, there's an adult there to help facilitate that, too. So, I think we have some safeguards in place for that.
Having the adult available, I think, is just, that's great. My other question is, I'd love how you've pinpointed who the helper students were already, and I'm wondering, though, if at some point in the future that you'd, in addition to pinpointing people who are helping, if you would be open to having people volunteer to become Students Supporting Students team because it seems like the training that you're providing would be so valuable. I wish you could give it to every student, but at least for students who might be interested in exploring that and learning more about that, it would be nice to open it up to volunteers.
Yeah, and yes. And so, one of the, one of the ways in which a well-established program moves forward is in the spring, they open an application process, and so, then, that goes out to the whole student body. We talked about that, and we don't think we're well-known enough yet. And so, what we actually did say is that we're going to check with our current students, check with some other adults, and create more openings for conversations with kids who might not otherwise be identified. So, we're trying to kind of create openings for those, for those kids, but I think, I fully expect that next year, we'll have an application process up and running for kids who would be interested in it.
Do you find that the students generally like to talk to students in their same grade, or do you have like freshmen who want to talk to seniors, or how does that work?
Well, again, they mostly are interacting with their original peer group, and so, if their peer group is a mixed-grade one, it'll be kids that they're familiar with across grades, like maybe it's, their peer group are kids in music, you know, and so then, it ends up being that way. We haven't, I don't think I've looked closely at that.
So, they're choosing people they already know at some level and not just a random stranger or a cute...
That's what it's been so far.
Senior or something, yeah.
Yep, that is what our experience has been so far.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Rob?
Thanks a lot for your presentation. Learned a lot of interesting and good things about this program from your presentation. I was a little concerned when I originally heard about it just because, or when I, I guess I was concerned because I had read in the paper about a student who was a peer counselor, they called it, at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, who had actually worked with the shooter in some capacity. It may have been homework help or something. And then, you know, looking back on it was appalled that she was put into that position. And so, I'm glad to hear about the self-care aspect of this and then, you know, for me that, you know, it would be a terrible thing if something happened and one of these peer helpers or student supporting students then felt responsible for not handling the situation properly. So, it's good to hear the kind of safeguard you have in there for protecting the students.
Can I, I don't know if you have another question related to that, but can I just address this? Because, because we did just have this meeting tonight, one of the things we did discuss was that article by that young woman. And I was not sure what they would say. So, we just, we just had, opened up the floor and said, "Just give us your feedback." And this is a group that is, doesn't actually hold back. And what I was struck by was how unfazed they were by it, completely unfazed. Because one of the things they said was like, first of all, this sounds like a different program than how we run things here. And so, they didn't, they didn't see the immediate parallel, except for the name, sort of. And secondly, they said, and I was trying to remember because I thought, I want to remember some of these comments, but they said, "We are so secure in the support that we have here and we understand the parameters of the program. We really feel that this would be unlikely to be a situation that we would feel that we found ourselves in." And, yeah. And, and our lovely and gracious Siri Hoff, who is one of our student supporting students, said, "While we understand that we're in service to the school, my actions are based on compassion for my peers and that I can enact that with support from adults is a wonderful thing." And I thought, that's what I want to share.
Thanks. One other thing, I was just interested, you mentioned a part in the training about things that you have to report that are like mandatory reporting. I know like if I'm teaching at Carlton and a student comes in and reports some kind of abuse or harassment, that there's certain things I have to report. Students who speak to other students might, might not realize that there are certain things, I mean, the, the trained students might realize it, but the student who isn't trained might not realize that they could be potentially saying something that they don't want reported, you know? And so, I'm just wondering, and then, you know, then it could be bad feelings, like, "Oh, I didn't want you to say that to anybody and those," you know, the helper would have to say, "Well, I'm required to." So...
Yeah, that is, so that was a big part of our training and a big conversation is that how do you maintain a natural relationship with your peers while you have this thing that you know? And so, they were well-coached about at what point do you say, "I just need you to know, I, I can't keep a secret for you that would hurt you or hurt somebody else and that I will help you through a process of, of sharing this information and getting help." But just so you know that. And so, our first meeting back after the training, we checked in and that was a topic, you know, that they had had their first opportunity saying that to peers that they were working with. Several months into it now, it's just, just not even an issue. Yep, yeah. But that, that was, that was something that was a legitimate concern, that we needed them to both be able to recognize that there are limits to confidentiality and still maintain a good relationship with their peers where they could be an authentic listener for them.
Thanks.
Excellent question. Jeff?
What did you find from other school districts, if anything, about, you know, this same type of program? And I think it's, you know, it's tough being a kid, period, but, you know, I think that if they could reach out to somebody that's got a decent reputation and some credibility, ask them some questions, I mean, that's, that's a good program. So, I'm just wondering, even, even nationally, it sounds like there's probably other things around for school districts like this. I don't know, but what did you find from other school districts just to kind of, or did you not look or did they not look for comparison?
For other, other districts that have a, like a peer helping program?
Yeah.
And we did talk to, I did talk, in fact, I went to Hastings. Hastings has one that's been established for about eight years. And, and it's, it's, it's a fantastic program. It's a very vibrant program. Hudson has had a program for 20 years. And you're right, because what kids do is they first talk to their peers when anything's coming up. And so, that's what makes this kind of an ingenious program, is that it's just a behavior that's already, we don't need to introduce a new behavior into the student population. So, they've found it to be quite successful. Interestingly enough, those are, so Hastings is about, it actually might be about eight years old now. And then, again, Hudson's is quite old and those were the two I actually spoke to, the people running those programs. And they were saying, "Wow, we log like a thousand peer helper contacts a year," right? So, we're at like 100. And so, we're talking to the students who are saying 100 and they said, "Oh, yeah, we talk all the time, but we just don't think it's worthy of reporting because they're just these super conscientious kids." And we say, "Here are the skills that you've used. If you use these skills, tell us, tell us," you know? And they're like, "Oh, okay, got it, Ray. We just don't want to like throw the data." Yeah, you're not, yeah. So, I think that that, once our, once we get some comfort with what it means to have those conversations and there's some sort of normalizing of it, I think we will continue to really reap more and more benefits from that.
Right, well, trust is the big thing. Truth and trust. So, I mean, the longer that goes on, you maybe find your next Dr. Phil out of the situation.
Right. I think you might be right there.
Ellen?
So, first, thank you for coming to give us such a thorough report. This is really, really, really exciting. I'm happy to know that you're thinking about the publicity because I know just in haphazard conversations with high school parents that it doesn't seem to be a well-known program. So, thinking about families that might be in crisis or as, as a parent, sometimes you aren't in the position that a peer could be to help your student. So, I think that, I'm really happy to hear that. So, my question has to do with sort of looking for it and the sustainability of it. And you really intentionally looked at different grades. So, I'm assuming some students are re-upping. And then, I don't know whether every year in October, you go through this intense two-day training. So, telling a little bit more about how does that look? And then, you carry, this is one more thing you're carrying, which is wonderful, but, you know, it's, it's a lot. And so, I don't know, what, what does a program, like if you said, a more mature program look like?
Yeah. Yes, the students are, are, our default is that they will continue. So, our ninth graders who are trained, we will have well-trained 12th graders. And yes, part of the, sort of the financial commitment that our grant funders and the district makes to this program is that we do indeed do a comprehensive two-day training every year. And that is so critical, not only because we need to, we, we all know that skills that we don't use degrade. And so, the opportunity to get a refresher is really important. And then, also, there's that little bit of drift, you know? So, it's always good to come back and, and have a refresher. But the other part of it is, is that we want these students to bond with one another. We need a cohesive group that supports one another, that has a shared experience. So, then, yes, every, every year, they will go through the same training. It's different as the program matures, but it's the same idea of that training. So, we will have students who will be very well-trained and we don't, we will recruit fewer students every year. So, the, the pool of new students, we will go to the eighth grade this year. Eighth grade is the only grade that we will poll the entire grade level to get names. The rest, we're going to do through this sort of referral recommendation process because we just have fewer per grade than we have to fill. And it would kind of be overkill to do that. And in terms of sustainability, just programmatically at the high school in a way? So, what I think is that, first of all, the opportunity to have, from our academic student coaches to our student supporting students, 52 students who are, who are so, so good at, at supporting their peers in a variety of ways is, couldn't be more fulfilling to do. But it also, as we continue to build capacity in this programming that supports our students in their sort of emotional growth and their mental wellness, I think that it takes on its own kind, it gets institutionalized in a way and it takes on, there's a lot of, there's a lot of input upfront, but I, I think as you were saying too, as that trust and familiarity happens, then there's less sort of explicit input and push that has to happen and it starts to continue under its own reputation and under its own steam with adult advisors who are pretty experienced for managing it. Does that kind of answer your question?
Margaret?
Thank you for this presentation. This was great. I would expect nothing less from you and the other staff who work in support of our students. I'm glad you're joining with the Norfield Union of Youth. There's a lot of youth in our community who aren't within the walls of NHS. And I'm also wondering if you can also look at other statistics like attendance and disciplinary issues. Maybe there may not be a causal relationship, but what changes, if anything, after the implementation of this program? Do we have more kids comfortably coming to school instead of staying home and away from an issue? And also, to Rob's point, I'm thinking that these, since these kids are natural helpers, they're probably act, naturally also aware enough and now trained to say to a peer, "This sounds like a problem that's bigger than what a teen can face alone. Let me find a good adult for you. I'll support you as you search, as we talk to Carrie or to Joel or whoever." So, that, I'm imagining that that's part of that natural outgrowth of a peer relationship is...
In some ways it is. In some ways, what we, what we end up needing to shape is a tendency to want to fix.
Yes.
And so, to say that, find a partner, find somebody, you know, recognize the limits of, you know, it hasn't been an issue, but it is, it is certainly something that we want to be aware of is that, you know...
Just those issues that are mandatory.
Oh, yeah.
If, you know, you need more help than...
Yep, yep.
What a peer can give you.
Mm-hmm, yep, yes. And in terms of the data, I didn't mention it, but in all of the, in the grants that I wrote and in the reporting that I do, attendance is one of the data points that we look at. We do look at office discipline referrals and we actually look at referrals to special ed and for 504, particularly for those things that are around the emotional. So, those are all data points that we're tracking.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Excellent. Other questions? Joel?
I saw Dr. Hillman today, the, the most recent time magazine, which talked about stress in the colleges and, and emotional stress. And the greatest, most early reason for college, let me say it again, the, the greatest cause of early college exit is due to emotional stress. And I think what an opportunity that our kids have to be able to have experience about, you know, on both sides of the table on this. So, thank you for your report. And Dr. Hillman has said, "Wait till you, wait till you hear the report tonight." And you, you exceeded his expectations.
I hope I did.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a, a comment. You know, we all thank you for your presentation tonight, but also thank you for bringing this program forward. And, you know, I was really struck last year when you presented to us and you talked about the peer selection and not really showing how, not really totally understanding how that, that was going to take place and certainly not expected. You know, you just sort of think, "Oh, no, the, the staff recommends, they know these kids, whatever." No, 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 this isn't how it works. And, and to really see that play out so incredibly well, it's just really fascinating. I mean, Hazleton and all of their work obviously know what they're talking about and we're, we're a part of a really, really strong program and just seeing initial stages of this happening and knowing how, you know, we'll move forward with it. It's just really exceeded personally my expectations for where I thought we would be a year later. So, thank you very much.
Good.
Excellent. Dr. Hillman?
Can you tell that I'm beaming? Because I think when you, first of all, thank you. You know, Carrie Duba is a treasure, you know, not just for Norfield High School, but for our community and the work that she has done. So, we really appreciate all of the effort that you've made. So, when you write a strategic plan, this is what you hope for. No one said to Carrie, "Go find this peer helper." She looked, she, she knew where we were going. She understood the goal of social emotional learning. She understood the strategic plan and she said, "Can we make this happen?" And she just didn't leave it go because she, I'm going to speak for her, I believe she feels empowered to pursue what you as the board have set as the direction for us. She writes a grant. She comes to us and says, "Can we make sure that we can have the money to be sustainable?" Because you know that that's a big piece, it's part of our vision statement, right? So, it is just so gratifying to see something that the work that the elected members of this community did, you know, you as school board members did with Dr. Miles and the administrative team to set the direction, how we've communicated it to our staff who immediately find ways that make sure that it's very clearly and distinctly applicable to our students. Social emotional health for all is one of our strategic priorities and if this does not fit the bill for that, I don't know what does. And if you also remember, we were struggling to think, "How could we apply the research about social emotional learning to the high school?" Ding 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 ding. To quote my favorite TV personality guy, Fiore, "Winner winner chicken dinner," right? I mean, this is exactly what the research says. The research says, as you get to high school, it has to be applied in this exact same way. So, we are research informed. We select programs that have a basis and have been tested. We provide training for the people involved. We have actually a plan for ongoing training, doesn't get any better than that. It aligns to our strategic plan and to our vision. And at the end, I know you've shot at 100 visits. I just encourage you to think of what if any one of those 100 visits didn't happen? And what if these trained students weren't able to help their peer at that given moment in time? The cost of missing one of these can be significant. So, I would not hang our heads at 100 visits. I think it's 100 opportunities that we have to intervene in a positive way for our students. So, we will get more visits, there's not an issue with that. Also, do you love groups of kids that understand data and they think they don't want to... I just, you know, as I've told you before, there's sometimes I work here and I think to myself, "My goodness, Matt, you're not in Kansas anymore." And I haven't had one of those moments in a while until again tonight. So, thank you, Carrie. Thank you for helping. And there's a lot of people that have to make this happen. There are a team of people that you know, Ray Hudray, Kathy Wurzenmiller, Kari Prudential, these people who have been here and committed. And again, they're willing to do extra things to make sure that kids have support. So, thank you and we thank you for all of your work. We look for additional reports as we move forward, so...
And one last note to Elias, if you can send, tell the group with, they have, you have our heartfelt gratitude. So, thank you. Excellent. So, we will move on next to item for discussion, which is additional licensed special education staff that we need to look at for 2018-19. And here to present that is Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall. Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for listening to my proposal this evening for additional licensed staff. As you know, our general enrollment has increased in the district, which is a good problem to have for a district. And as that, a portion of those students are also our students with special needs. And we have seen an increase in our special education numbers. We've also seen an increase just in the referral rate as well for our early childhood special education students. That has been a trend we've had for a few years now and that's been now stable for the last couple of years. We believe that is due to our new Help Me Grow program that is actually through the referral program that's through the state of Minnesota and it's an online program that actually reaches more families having easier access to that referral system, physicians, other professionals in the community that are referring students. So, we're getting those students early, which is the good news and helping them, helping them at an earlier time. So, in my proposal, you'll see that I have asked for...
So in my proposal, you'll see that I have asked for 2.45 increase in FTE for special education staff. One is an elementary teacher at Bridgewater. One is a middle school. And I apologize for the use of acronyms in my memo, but there is ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder, and the NB stands for Neurobiological Programming Teacher. That's a teacher that serves students on the autism spectrum, but also serves other students with other disabilities that are neurobiological in nature that affects students in a similar manner. The strategies used in that program are effective with that group of students. So that at the middle school level. And then to increase a high school teaching position by .2, to bring that back actually. And then .25 at early childhood special ed for a school social worker. We have a school social worker there right now that's at .55. And that would bring that position up to a .8. That individual, Shelley Hansen, works with early childhood special ed as well as our ALC. So it's a very diverse population that she's working with. We have our very youngest and some of our, you know, our high school students with the highest needs actually in the district in some manner. They're all at risk. And so that position has become more challenging over time. As you know, our ALC has grown as well. Those needs have grown. We added some time to that a few years ago in the general ed piece. But now with our numbers in early childhood, we're just not able to reach the needs of all of our early childhood students that need the social work piece. The social worker works on doing, in the referral process and in the evaluation process, works on that social history with the family, making that initial connection with the family, finding out that history, what's going on, what are the issues surrounding the family and also the child specifically that would relate to having a child with a disability. And how do you connect that family in their first initial contact with the district to resources, whether it's in the district or in the community that are going to help support that family and then help support that child as a learner all the way through our system. So really kind of hitting it at that point for those students. So those are the greatest increased needs right now in the district. And that's why we've pinpointed adding those positions at this time. So our overall student population in special education, our child count, December 1st child count, is up at its highest in the 15, 16 years that I've been associated with the district. We've never had this many of children in special education. So this is a challenge to us, not only with our teacher time, but also our space as well. It's an ongoing challenge for us. So that support of serving 624 students over our 574 last year is a very big increase. Part of that increase is our students with specific learning disabilities. That has gone up by a considerable amount. Our students with emotional behavioral disorders, as you heard, you know, there's that need to help support students with either behavioral disorders or that emotional health. And then our ECSE population. So overall, we're up about 2% in our special education population. And in some of those specific areas like EBD and SLD, we're up about 14%.
And to be clear, we're not asking for any vote this evening, but we just wanted to make sure that you have this information ahead of time. We will bring it before you next month, asking for action.
Okay. Questions for Cheryl? Rob?
So the .2 and the .25 are teachers who are already here. It's just bumping up their...
It's an increase, yes.
And the other two are new hires?
Yes, they could possibly be new hires, yes.
Is it getting difficult to find people to fill special? I mean, every year we're having to add some, it seems like.
Right, yes. And so you know, there's a shortage of special education teachers. We happen to, if we can get out ahead early enough, then we are fortunate to find the staff that we need. And we've been really fortunate to find excellent staff, teachers.
I think when you talk to other places, there are folks who aren't even getting applicants. And I think we have such a great network within the system. Even last year, just giving one example, in a building, they were interviewing someone for a general education teaching position. And as they looked at that, they noticed the person had special education licensure. And they had multiple good candidates for this position being interviewed for. That principal walked out of that interview, called Cheryl and said, "Can you come over here right now? We're going to interview this. This person could be phenomenal for the other job that you have posted." So that goes to show, you know, the collaboration between our administrators to make sure that we fill all of those positions. And I think we have been very fortunate. We have been in a unique situation, I think partially due to the reputation that the school district's special education program has earned, where we have people who are veterans in other systems who do apply here. And through that and the network of noting that we support our young staff through mentoring and other kinds of things, we've also been able to be pretty good at getting, you know, some younger staff to apply and be successful here.
Right. Amy?
So I just have a sort of related question. As our special education staff grows, do you have the space to put them?
We're being as creative as we can to support them and having adequate space, given the space that we do have. So it is getting more difficult.
So we've been lucky, frankly, because we've had people who have found some creative solutions. So two years in a row now, we've asked Director of Buildings and Grounds, Jim Colson, to get us a quotation on what it would cost to install portables at Longfellow. And we've also talked about potentially looking at that at another building. Last year's creative example, by talking with high school principal Joel Lear over a cup of coffee one morning about the space issues, he said, "Oh, I think I have a solution." And Cheryl Hall and Sarah Pratt, our special education administrators, now work out of the high school here because Joel had a spot that he could make some things work. And then we were able to recapture their offices at Longfellow formerly to be able to serve itinerant staff and to serve some students in that area. So that's one example of a creative solution. We were very fortunate at Sibley, where we're running out of space for the NB program there, that we have one grade level that currently is in five sections in fourth grade. A very unusual circumstance. That grade level has actually reduced the number of students this year. So we can put those classes back into four sections next year at Sibley, freeing a classroom for special education. So as we get into talking about facilities and our facilities action team coming up, one of the things that you're going to hear Cheryl talking about, some of the disability areas that have increased, some of these areas have a specific space requirement for the program. And that's an area that's really, in the last year, has really caused some substantial more space constrictions than even a year ago, you know, when we were talking about facilities. So I really applaud Cheryl. I applaud the teamwork that our administrative team has to try to find every little nook. Another example is even at Longfellow, we did some work about rearranging some of our strategies with our preschool, our daycare age piece to be able to free up some room so we didn't have to, you know, take that next look at how would we have to get a portable. A portable in the old days, you could, you know, take some, basically some bricks and put the portable on top of it, right? And it wasn't all that much, they were pretty reasonably cost. Now, I think we've seen them costing $70,000 or so one time because you have to make sure that there's a foundation now. You have to make, the footings have to be poured. There are restroom requirements. There are sprinkling requirements. It is not your, it's not the portables that we had Sibley, at Sibley in the 1990s. There's significant more requirements. So all of the creativity in trying to address the space has been great teamwork, but we, there is a shelf life to how many of those moves we can make.
I was worried that you were going to tell me that you were going to have to take over the new nursing stations and make them at the special ed.
Not yet.
Not yet.
But thanks for the idea.
Take any good ideas we have.
So I appreciated that you were addressing. My one question about Longfellow was already answered, which is that also that is the ALC as well involved, but not for this particular .25. So we have this new formula which helps define like how many to hire. But I'm assuming that that's, you know, like not enough. That we have the, you know, the stress that the teachers are under and knowing that there's a teacher shortage. And we want to keep those that are working with our students happy. And I was just thinking about what Carrie just presented with this, our peer helpers and making sure they're supported and that they're dealing with students that are under, you know, different needs and under stress in different ways. And are there things as a board that we should be aware of or helpful in terms of how to keep those teachers feeling good and, you know, happy in really trying times?
That's really a wonderful question. And it's something that is always on our minds. And I think it's how do we look at our staffing? How do we look at our support? I think it's also, we are fortunate here to have a case management time on top of a prep time that is a selling point for us. And that is helpful, but it also creates, it's less time then for that teacher to work with students. So it's a give and take, but it does help to take care of our folks and that are working very hard with our students and do an excellent job. And we are very fortunate with the staff that we have here and the expertise, not only with our licensed staff, but also our educational assistance staff. So I think one of the things that we look at in our staff development time is trying to support that and trying to support them on getting that professional development that they need, the training they need to do their jobs and keeping that going. We do not only here within the district, but we also send staff out to trainings because it's such an expertise areas that we can't do it all here under our roof and the time that we have. There's such specialties. And so giving them that training, continuing to support the curriculum and developing curriculums that they can use that can help decrease the stress of them having to create things all the time on their own or find things. We know how teachers bring in their own materials sometimes. Doing those kinds of things help. And then also in our staff development, we really were focused in February on doing some conscientious things that are going to help staff with their stress level or understanding how to take care of themselves, not only the students that we're training, but we also have to train our staff in how they can do self-care and taking care of themselves and balancing their lives and reminding them of that as well. And I think Dr. Hillman does a wonderful job of that in how he approaches things in the district and supporting staff and being present with them and understanding what challenges they're facing today.
Thank you. That was a great answer. You're welcome. Other questions? Jeff?
I'm just wondering, in the last, say, 10 years, 20 years, I mean, we're special ed. I mean, you know, why is it increasing so much in a sense? And then it seems to me that every time, you know, we try to do a co-op with some other districts and stuff, it kind of falls apart. Now we're together back with Fairbo. And, you know, what can we learn from somebody like, you know, 196 that's got a big collaborative of school districts working together? And do we do referrals to that? But I'm just looking at more of the sustainability piece and what the trend is. And I want maybe Matt to comment on that and you come in on that.
Well, I'll start with the cooperative. And if there was ever a phrase that was more true, "Build it and they will come." If you recall with the creation of SEVSEC, Margaret serves as your representative on the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. That cooperative has been in existence for a little more than, well, almost two years now. We were instrumental in getting the cooperative started. It involves Fairbo, Owatonna, and Medford. So far, it's been excellent collaboration among the districts. There have been some startup issues, as you might imagine, bringing students from four different systems into a cooperative. I think a lot of those things are being solved and it's even better going forward. They have space issues. The waiting list at SEVSEC is substantial already. It's incredible, the fact that we are seeing, you know, space and staffing-related issues here, as is the co-op, but they have no more room at this point. So I think that we're really doing very well with that cooperative to begin with. It will only grow. We will, one of the reasons that we started the cooperative, Jeff, and expanded, there are a number of technical reasons why we had to do it differently than we had done in the past. But it was not uncommon for us to send a student to a 196 program. I remember one year where I saw a bill for a student for $90,000 just for transportation to a program in the Twin Cities because we were not able to offer that here. There are still unique circumstances like that where we may have students who have to participate in some of those programs, given the individual education plan of the student, but far fewer than ever.
Very rarely.
But that was not uncommon, wasn't Cheryl, a few years ago?
No, we were, no, between the 1821 program, we would send students up to Dakota County Technical Education Center for their 18 to 21 programming. And then, right, then we were going to 917, actually, which is an intermediate. And that kind of answers your other part of your question. We can't become part of an intermediate because we're not a metro area school district. And that is reserved for, those larger collaboratives are really under the statute, in the Minnesota statutes, for larger districts serving and the special education programs served under an intermediate. So there's specific language in that statute of how you qualify to be a part of that.
Cheryl, would you please talk about your thoughts behind why the numbers especially, not just here, but across the state and across the nation have increased? Because I think there's, I think one of the big things you mentioned earlier here that's going to impact us over the next couple of years is that change in preschool screening in terms of the Help Me Grow. Could you comment on that and then just a few other pieces?
So first, we have better identification early on. And in the state of Minnesota, we serve children birth to five in our education system. Other states serve birth to five, maybe through their social services departments. It's very different in each state. So under the state of Minnesota, we've been doing this for many years. And that referral process, again, has been enhanced through the Help Me Grow process. And it's an online, that online piece has helped provide access, easier access. And our communities today, our young people today, that's where they're going to go is use an electronic way to make a referral that's just streamlined, right? And it goes right to the state. And the state system can identify exactly where that student should be served and identifies the district that would be responsible. The other piece, the growing piece of that, which we've become more aware of recently, is that that system now will be interfaced with our medical providers and our social services. So that will become an automatic referral that into, through their systems, into this, filter into the system. So actually, that will be, and the early, so on the well child checks, they'll actually be doing the ASQSE, which is the social-emotional screening tool that's used in our screening process now will be applied at the early childhood well baby checks. And if there's a score on that, they can do that automatic referral into the system right away. And that will feed into this. And so we're kind of anticipating that this will be an ongoing referral piece 12 months out of the year instead of during our screening process, which is really nine months of the year. So we're actually kind of bracing ourselves potentially for influx of referrals and more screenings for students earlier on. So you have that piece of the referral process. And then also, over the years, over the last 15 years, there's been a change in the criteria for some of the, like the autism spectrum disorder criteria change that was quite a while ago. But we still see that that has identified more students on the autism spectrum that are qualified under the educational category, not the medical, but they don't have to have a medical, but the educational criteria. We are just better, I think, at identifying needs and referrals. We also have students that are, one in five children are living in trauma and have trauma-affected mental health illness. And so we're getting better at identifying that and doing programs like Carrie was talking about tonight that are helping to intervene, right? School linked to mental health is now a piece of what we do as well that is a support that isn't under special education, but we allow that linkage of mental health therapists coming into the schools so children have, can access that. We can break down those barriers so children can access the mental health services. So there's lots of layers to what we do to intervene. And special education, of course, is the most intensive intervention that we have in our education system. And that's, and there is a cost to that. But it also, we're better at identifying and we, there's just a need, a greater need. And of course, we can also reflect on when our whole community and our whole system, when the social services are not supported and families are not getting the support in the essential, five essential areas of their lives. in the essential, five essential areas of their lives are disjointed or are not fulfilled, you know that we will see more needs in our school systems.
And I'd like to point out that we have an expert providing testimony here this evening. You know Cheryl is the president-elect for the Minnesota Administrators of Special Education. So Cheryl has been elected by her peers across the state to lead them next year. So we are fortunate to have Cheryl in this position and no shock, given that detailed answer she provided. I do want to put some good news is that the return on the investment, while we're going to see a spike in the number of early childhood referrals because of this more ubiquitous way that kids can come to us through well child checkups. What we know from numerous research studies is that the earlier that we are able to intervene, the earlier that we know about a potential disability, we will have an opportunity to help that student get the skills that they need at an earlier age. In a previous life, I was an elementary principal in a building for pre-K through second grade and every spring we had a day of joy when our kids who had been identified as early childhood special education students did not qualify for the next layer beyond developmental delay. And everyone in the building thoroughly enjoyed that day because that's exactly what is supposed to happen. Intervening early yields substantial savings, if you will, down the line because if we're able to teach those skills during those very formative years before they reach age seven, we know that they have a chance to exit special education and then be able to join their regular peers in the mainstream classroom for the rest of their academic career. So you are going to see an increase in the numbers in early childhood special education and that is where our biggest space crunch is right now. And we are, we have no more to go. We have looked, we've walked through the building twice and are looking under stairwells to see, do you think we could have put someone over there? You know, that's the point that we're at with it there. So and we all know that, but this is going to be a crunch coming up. We've actually purchased slots in community preschools in order to make sure early childhood special education students can get that academic requirement that with their same age peers. So we have some struggles ahead of us, but the good news is that it's going to be a good thing when we look at this down five to 10 years down the road. Am I right there, President-elect?
That, that's what we are hoping for.
No.
If the rule of thumb applies to this in special ed and early childhood as it does, you know, you spend a dollar now, you'll save a dollar, a future dollar. The, we're going to spend, if it's approved, 213,000 now, we'll save a million and a half dollars in the future. And that's a pretty easy way to save money. Thank you.
One could only hope.
Yes. And that's only the financial impact of it, doesn't, doesn't address the social and and emotional impact of the solution also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other last comments from board members?
I just wanted, first spoke, congratulations. They could not have elected a better leader for the group and we know that you'll have some significant impact statewide in this, in special education. And of course, we'd be remiss in not mentioning the cross subsidy that school districts statewide have in terms of the the costs that are not covered and that are picked up by the general fund. And I know for fiscal year 2016 statewide, it was $680 million, which is a significant amount of money and double-digit increases being projected and you know, we see that being played out right here in our own district. And I know that each year the legislature's picks certain areas to have work groups and there's a push by Schools for Equity in Education, and I know Minnesota School Board Association to get our legislators to pick special ed as a work group and to be able to convene a broad cross-section of stakeholders to take a look at this issue and figure out how there's a way to, you know, ultimate goal to eliminate the cross subsidy, but at least work towards that. And when you have some of these sort of, you know, mandates that the federal government is is requiring and not supporting, it just really gets difficult. And we absolutely do the right thing by our students and we thank you for coming forward with this because we know that this is what is necessary, but we also know that it's a strain on our general education fund as well. And so, you know, we need to, we need to look at that and any time as as school board members and and those who, you know, work with our legislators on behalf of us, we appreciate them bringing that forward. And I don't know if the legislators have announced their working groups yet. I think they were talking about five potentially.
I think though, what I understand is though, that will all be in the omnibus bill. So who knows how it shakes out? You know, when we ask for money to help support this, they, they give us a work group, right? So in the old days, we would say that you're, you know, they're just avoiding it by putting it to a work group, but the truth is that the last major work group, the facilities work group, did yield something that was outstanding. Kevin Dahl, a former senator, high school social studies teacher here, authored the long-term facilities maintenance revenue, a bill which was passed and we are getting money from that today. So you know, the most recent history is that the work groups have made some changes, which is not the way it has been historically. And I'm going to look at Val because currently right now, our cross subsidy is roughly $3 million. Just so you put it on a, you know, a local context, that's a pretty substantial cross subsidy. Morally imperative, we're not complaining that we're providing those essential services, but it is just something that the folks in the public need to know.
Well, just to add context to that $3 million, we just passed an operating levy at the maximum amount and that was 2.1 million. So we can't even levy our way out of a cross subsidy. So that's why we wouldn't really look forward to having a working group. If nothing else, it's it's data that they have to look at, they cannot choose not to act on it, but at least, you know, it's there for everyone to see and and real recommendations that we could hopefully then push forward going forward.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will bring this back at our April 23 board meeting.
That is correct.
For approval. Okay, excellent. So we will now move on to items for individual action. Our first item is the summary of board minutes for publication. I know we had the sample of that at our March 12 board meeting for for everyone to to look at and to have time to think about before we move forward with this motion. So prior to discussion, is there a motion to direct that a summary of the board proceedings be published in the official newspaper of the district conforming to the requirements of capital M period S period 331A period 01 subdivision 10? In other words, we are doing this as a legal requirements as stated. So is there a motion to approve? Ellen? Moved by Ellen? Is there a second? Margaret? Okay. So any questions in our discussion around? Thank you again to Anita for for providing, for really leading the charge on this and providing a really good sample of of how that will look going forward, showing in your packets that March 12 actual board, school board minutes and then those that would be in the summary in our official newspaper, The Northfield News. So any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And Julie, just so you know, Anita and I are also looking at just a couple of other minor modifications to the way we present the agenda to you in terms of where the consent agenda may end up and then also the potential of including the minutes approval as part of the consent agenda. So you may see some minor structural changes in the agenda simply to promote the most efficient meeting possible so that we can spend the time having the discussions like we have had this evening that are so important.
Excellent. Thank you for that work. Okay. Second item for individual action is resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. This is an annual action. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so this is the annual resolution that we take to, excuse me, I gotta turn my mic on here, for non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. The list of those teachers are in your memorandum and it's a resolution, so we'll need a roll call vote there too.
Okay. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teachers as presented at the end of the 2017-18 school year? Is there a motion? Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. So this again is a roll call vote. Anita? Gurwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Strathmon?
Aye.
Cornell?
Aye.
Calangelo?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Our third item for individual action is additional English language learners' educational assistant at the middle school for the balance of the 17-18 school year. Dr. Hillman, did you have some comments prior to a motion?
I'll ask Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Hansen, who supervises our English Language Learners Program, to come to the microphone and just give a brief overview prior to the motion.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Sure. One of the things that happens during a school year is we get new students and if they've been in a school in the United States, we can usually assimilate them into our programs. When we get students that are coming directly from a foreign country and have no English, it becomes more difficult and of course, we have no control over when these students arrive. And we've had two arrive at the middle school recently who have no English and we're not sure if they qualify as students who've had interrupted education at this point. We have to do a little bit more interviewing to determine that. But needless to say, they've never been in an American school system and they just need more support. Good news is that the title amendment window is open right now, so I can add an amendment to take the $5,000 from Title III, which is a program for English language acquisition. So we can, Val and I talked today and we can do that. So the the money that we would need to fund the educational assistant for the rest of the year would come from the Title III program.
Excellent. So priority questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the addition of an educational assistant for the English Learners Program at the middle school until the end of the 2017-18 school year? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Margaret? Questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Margaret?
So this would be a new hire just till the end of this year?
Correct.
And it would not automatically rate up for the fall?
No. Hopefully, we can provide them the support they need just to learn how to navigate the building and, and school.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So, Mary Grace, what, so is this educational assistant, what amount of time do they spend with the students?
They would be hired for all day.
Okay.
They would be with them in their English learner class as well as going to some of the other classes with them.
Okay, excellent. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are on to already the consent grouping. So is there a motion, is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So last items for individual action, or I'm sorry, information. Dr. Hillman, enrollment report?
Yes, you have the, you have the latest enrollment report in your packet showing full-time students excluding early childhood and part-timer and penciling ALC students at 3986.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions on the enrollment report? Nope. Okay. Next item for information, Dr. Hillman, you were going to provide a update on the facility action team?
Yes, so back in January, we had started to discuss after the bond referendum that was unsuccessful last November, we had looked at forward the next steps, you know, for our facilities needs. As we know, we have a number of facilities needs that we need to address, I think sooner rather than later in a number of ways. We're trying to use as many unique and creative solutions as we have available to us, but at the time, I presented a proposal to you that would say we had done this extensive work over the past three years in a, in a very democratic way, blowing the doors open and asking anyone to come in to provide you with feedback that helped formulate our master facilities plan that was approved in November of 2016 and what of course ultimately led to the bond referendum in November of 2017. So I have been working over the past month or so to start to assemble that team and we will meet, that team will meet three times. Well, we extended invitations to roughly 34 individuals from the community. What I did is I looked at various stakeholder groups within the community, the business community, the agricultural community, working professionals, within all of those groups, parents, you know, people who are also parents, a mix of people who have students in the system who don't, also a specific group looking at retirees from within the community and then of course, some of our professional staff. So for the community member portion, we extended, I'm going to say roughly 34, 35 invitations. I'm pleased to tell you that as of just a little bit ago, we are at 30 members of that community, including some Spanish-speaking members of our community who will be supported with an interpreter at the meeting. We still have a couple of invitations out that we have not heard back from yet and are working with folks on that. So those meetings will take place, the first one begins a week from today, it's on April 16th. Then the next one will be the following Tuesday, which will be April 24th. This is in your memorandum. The final meeting will be on April 30th. The 16th and the 30th, those meetings will take place at the Greenville Park Media Center. The meeting on the 24th will take place right here in this room. And again, what we know is we want to try to apply some of the skills that we've learned from Dr. Bruce Miles and Big River Planning in terms of that chainsaw method to help increase some consensus. So what we're going to do is over those three meetings, the first meeting, we're going to start with simply a brief history. Members of the committee will get some information ahead of time. They will get the facility studies that we've had done, they'll get the demographic study, they will get access to the previous referenda website so they can have a chance to go back and take a look at that, that's still available, isn't just something we have on the front page of the website anymore, giving them some background detail. I will provide a very brief, which I know is hard for anyone to believe that I could do, but a very brief history about the process. And then what we're going to do is we're going to ask them to work in groups, working with multiple people throughout that first evening, to really do a analysis of the plan, the master facilities plan, looking at projects and timeline. What are things that they think resonated well with people as we put the question before voters last November? What were parts of the plan that resonated? What were parts that they think held people back and where people had concerns? What is the timeline? What was the timeline? Was the timeline too aggressive? Is there a different timeline that they may look at? We'll be working on gathering those initial thoughts during that first meeting. We'll take all of those thoughts, we will be using the the strategy that you've seen us use before where groups create statements of of what they think resonated for each one and what didn't resonate. We'll have people use a power voting system to be able to try to help filter to the top the ideas that they think are the, were the most impactful in terms of the first real feedback that we took the community's temperature with the vote in November and obviously we have some room to go there. So they'll give us that initial feedback. We will then provide all of that information back to the committee before the end of that week so that they have a chance to review it before the second meeting on the 24th. I call the second meeting on the 24th, the Empire Strikes Back edition because you know, it's that connector module, you have to have known Star Wars, sorry, these are the jokes folk, so. Anyway, the second one will really be trying to hone in and we'll try to be filtered down those main thoughts about the various projects and the timeline, almost to the point where they will have a draft working recommendation for you at the end of that second meeting. Again, we send all that information out to people and in the third meeting, they will come back, we will do some wordsmithing, using our best Dr. Chris Richardson and Dr. Roger Jennywork of trying to hone that recommendation down to a reasonable length. We will then ask people at the end of that final session to give us their feedback and they'll have three options on their ballot, which will be one, I love the recommendation that we're making, fully support it. Second option will be, you know, I might have a few concerns about the recommendation, but I could live with that recommendation. And the third would be, I can't support the recommendation that this working group has put together. That will not only allow you to see a very authentic process within the community unfold, but it will also give you some data about what this cross representative stakeholder group has to say about the potential next steps with the facilities plan. All board members are welcome to attend any of these sessions. If you remember in the past, when we've had working groups like this for Colmaneros or for some other facilities, we've had guidance from us, gave that this does not constitute a meeting, so no action is being taken, we're publishing them. So we, you know, we believe that we're well within the bounds of the open meeting law to do that. I would ask that when you come on those evenings to serve as an observer in terms of just because we really want to make sure that it's an authentic process with the people involved and I will certainly guide you to help facilitate it should you so choose to be there. We just want to make sure that, you know, it's the folks who are there who are doing the bulk of the discussion. So that is the plan that I have formulated. I do believe that it meets what I told you we would be looking at in February and then we'll give you that feedback and then we will know what, then after we hear that, then we will take our next step to determine. will take our next step to determine what, if anything, we would look to do in the coming months.
Excellent. Questions, anyone have?
Amy? So are, in addition to the master facilities plan, will they be looking at any of the thought exchange information from last year or this year, or, or what other information do they review?
So I am not planning at this point to provide them with the thought exchange information because I think that the thought exchange information that we have specific to facilities, I don't believe it's relevant to this discussion. The reason I say that is that that data informed our decision to move ahead in November, and we got an answer on that question. So I don't believe that the 2015 or 16 thought exchange data would be very helpful as this part of the discussion because we've moved past that point. At the next meeting, we will have thought exchange here on your, to present the, join the conversation or continue the conversation data. That information will be ready in time to share with them on, on the 16th. And of course, that thought exchange information is so much more broad, you know, than just facilities. So as much as a believer I am in that thought exchange conversation process, my thoughts at this point on it being relevant data for the committee to include, I'm not sure that that's the appropriate piece. We've used it a number of times in the past, certainly have gotten our money's worth out of it. As I just look at this particular conversation, I think that we used that conversation prior to our last decision point, which was on November 7th. We got a very clear piece of information from the voters at that point, and I think we need to make sure we start a new and move forward.
Other questions or comments? Okay, great. It sounds really, really good, and I-
I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be very good, yes.
That's great. And what I love is that, you know, you're, you know, we're really getting good work out of those community members, and I think that they'll feel like their time has been well spent really giving us the direction that we, we really want.
And I think we should be proud of it. I mean, nearly everyone immediately said absolutely I'll step in and help. And those people who could not, they said, oh, I'm so sorry, I can't because I'm not going to be able to make, you know, a couple of the meetings. And then when asked, hey, could you help us think about someone else within your constituent group? People came forward and not only gave us names, but they called the people and said, hey, I told you that I want you on this committee, and so you gotta say yes. I think that that's a testament to the community. The community, our community is very pro-education. They just weren't at a point where they're comfortable answering that question in the affirmative on November 7th, but they immediately stepped forward being willing to do so. And I'll be straightforward, that I did reach out to many community members who were honest enough to share with us their concerns about the plan publicly last time. And so getting that voice to the table, I think will only help formulate a stronger plan that we hope will suffice the needs that we have for our facilities and also honor and respect the voters in the community.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So our last item for information, school cancellation update.
So I think that it was, I think the glee that I had in looking at the snow forecast diminishing with each National Weather Service report on Sunday, the glee that I have may not have been normal. But I was thrilled to see when they had initially predicted seven inches of snow for today, and then it got to be three, and then it got to be two, and then it was down to .8. I think my family thought there might be something wrong with me. However, I enjoy the weather service people, but I'm no longer interested in attending 4:00 AM webinars with them about incoming weather. Is that okay? I've got a little therapy now, thank you for that.
You're not done.
I know, yes.
But you do have to mention the webinars are at 4:00 AM.
It's great. Actually, I can't say enough about the National Weather Service. They provide incredible support. I mean, there are 70 people on these calls at 4:00 AM, and you can see right after the webinar, all these decisions are made because they're giving us the best information that they have at the time in something that we all know is not an exact science. They're very honest about their limitations, they're very helpful. You know, however, with the cancellation that we had last week coming out of spring break, that did get us to the fourth day. And so according to our calendar and what the board has approved, we've scheduled July, or, July, June 11th as a makeup day for teachers only. So as you recall, the third day brought us to June 8th, that's a student and a staff makeup day, and then June 11th is a teacher-only makeup day. Any further snow days that we would have from here on out would not be made up. That is according to the way that we have worked with the NEA and with the calendar that we have approved. So we appreciate, what I really appreciate is the clarity that the board's had when we asked you to approve calendars two years in advance. It was for exactly, partially, this reason so people knew when the makeup days would be. The fact that we've identified them on the calendar, no one wants a makeup day, you know what I mean? But the fact is that we are following what you set for us. I will give you a preview that because of the unusual number of cancellations, and not just that we've had, but other places have had as well, we are going back, we did have a working group last year to take a look at what are called e-learning days that are now allowed by statute. Normally, you know, we like to kind of get on the leading edge of those kinds of things, but we did let other districts take the lead on that to start. We now have more, easily more than a dozen districts across the state who use an e-learning strategy in place of calling a snow day. So while they may call a snow day, there's some specific rules around, you know, teachers posting assignments to their learning management system in our key school, some very clear expectations, you know, for staff and for students about what could be accomplished at home on that day. We, of course, know it isn't the same as being here, but it is a piece that, in the districts that we've seen do this, the trade-off of having students come back after the scheduled school year is completed versus having students complete some very specific activities. And we know some, some staff are actually already giving students, in fact, I just know from personal experience on the snow day last week, AP tests are coming up, and there were some teachers who were saying, hey, here's what we need to do to make sure we keep this going. So we will most likely be coming back to you at some point with a report about how we might look at implementing e-learning days as a substitute for having to try to makeup days down the line. There are, like anything else, there are issues that will be associated with that, but we have enough places that have tried it already that we think that we can find a reasonable solution.
Excellent. Any questions? I'm looking ahead. Three more days of snow coming up in the next 10 days, so on that note.
I don't trust any forecast that's looking more than four hours ahead.
Unfortunately, your call has relatively low stakes.
Yes.
So with all the technology and stuff out there, the 4:00 AM, I mean, what was the lesson learned from that event versus other times? I mean, it could have been hit or miss, it just obviously wasn't.
That's a great question, and I've learned you're only ever as good as your last call. And, you know, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, I, we could give you the data behind the decision-making process for each of those. I think, you know, you look at the one that I would consider frankly to be a little bit of a swing and a miss on April 3rd or 4th, or whatever that was last week, you're making the decision based upon the best information that you have at the time. When you're predicted to have seven inches of snow with 20 to 30 mile an hour winds by the time that students are dismissing, that changes the discussion, you know? So you're always nervous when you're making a decision when there isn't any snow on the ground and you're basing it upon, you know, what the experts in the field are telling you. You know, a couple of weeks back, we had made a decision where we knew we aren't going to have any snow, and they were saying we wouldn't see anything until about 3 o'clock. We were able to execute, we wanted to make sure that that worked. We did execute an early release strategy, which we don't like and parents like even less, but we did get students out, and as soon as I got the call that the buses were back in, you couldn't see outside your window. I mean, so it is, it is not an exact science, but what we do is we always make sure that we look at the various factors. We look at visibility, number one, which is now easier because it gets lighter earlier, right? We look at are the roads passable, and we actually, for people, we actually do drive the roads. Even last Wednesday, we drove the roads early in the morning, the bus company and I did check rural roads in that case. Gravel roads that day were actually better than the in-town roads. So we drive, so we have actual data of us going out and seeing what the conditions are like. You know, we are looking at cold, in this case, this time of year, that's not a huge issue. You know, what is the plowing schedule? You know, we've had some really good conversations with our city. They've been very helpful in terms of saying, hey, here's the amount of snow, here's when we're going to get out, we think we'll be ready. Our local grounds maintenance crew who are out very early plowing to make the places passable. And so there's a lot of effort that goes into it. Our primary concern is student safety. And then, of course, balancing that with, we know it's very inconvenient for parents to have to change their plans, you know, for a day. So we're always looking at, we do live in Minnesota, this is not a secret. There are lots of days where it's not like we're traveling to the metro every day, we have to say, can we get people into town in a reasonable way? And if people are interested in more, I have a video on our website that shows how we make decisions regarding weather. I do think that they should require superintendents to have a minor in meteorology.
Okay, great work, Matt. Noel, you had a comment?
I've had a comment from a parent who was asking the question, and my response is, our responsibility is for the safety of the children both ways. And they say, you know, we're thinking about getting the kids to school, but you've got